Okay, my name is Paul Velayd. I'm representing the Daily Herald Editorial Board. And today I have a meeting with the Lincolnshire Prairie View District, one of three school board candidates. Anne Van Graven, Asha Goldstein, Kate Harper, Catherine O'Keefe, and Maria Peterson and Michael Weaver. So we're going to be asking them a few questions and then we'll get started. Anne, we'll start with you. So when and why did you decide to run for the board?
Well, I joined the board and decided to run in 2012 and was elected onto the board in 2013. At the time I decided to run, I had been heavily involved in PTO and other volunteer programs in the school and had been recently the PTO president and responsible for some of their fundraising. And I felt it was kind of time for a change, to shift my focus into another area and to bring some of that background from being in the schools to the school board. So I ran at that time. I've been on the board now almost eight years. And I feel like, you know, I've been able to contribute in that capacity as a parent in the district, but also a very engaged volunteer to provide some perspective into the school board. And then over the years to continue to grow that experience. Decided last year to run really for reelection, partly because of the pandemic and wanting to see a continuity of leadership and experience on the board with four seats up for reelection and two board members already deciding that they would not seek reelection. It just seemed like the right decision to stay on, to continue to provide that experience and that background. And it's always nice, I know, to kind of have new thoughts brought in and new perspectives added to the board and melded into the seven-person working unit. So I'm excited to see, you know, what the next, you know, group of people will be and what we can do together.
Okay, thank you very much. Asha, how about you?
So running for the board is something I've actually considered doing for a number of years now. However, my children were at a less independent age, being younger and, you know, do have a full-time job. And my husband actually serves for the village of Riverwoods as trustee. His tenure there is expiring come April. And so we thought, and our kids are a little bit more independent now. So now is a good time for me to pursue my personal goals. I just think that, you know, having a background in finance, also having two children in both the junior high and half-day, you know, gives me a different perspective than perhaps the other current members of the school board. And it's always been something that I've wanted to do.
Okay, thank you. Kate?
Hi, yes. So I am actually seeking reelection similar to Anne. I ran initially. You know, I was elected back in 2013. I have spent eight years on the board. I initially ran. I was somewhat new to the area, passionate about education, looking to get back to the community. I relocated from the DC area and I actually stopped working when I moved here. So I was trying to find somewhere to channel my energy from a professional career, also in finance and consulting. I thought that I could bring that skill to the board. So I ran back then and then I ran again in 20, what, I guess 17? And this year I decided to run again for some of the same reasons as Anne. You know, it's been an interesting year with the pandemic. We also have, are losing some of our more experienced board members at this time and have some lesser experienced members on the board. So I thought it would be good for a little continuity and a little experience. And I do still have a child in the district and two, a district 125. So I thought I still had a little bit to offer and was still relevant to, you know, to what's happening within the schools and in the community. I feel like I'm pretty well connected in the community and I've been successful in having conversations with community members and parents during my time on the board. And so I look to continue to do that and hopefully provide some value.
Okay, thank you very much. Catherine?
Forgot I was muted there for a second.
Everybody does that, yeah.
Glorious start, huh? So I'm running, I have two children in the district. We've currently been through each school in the district. Both my children have gone through Sprague and Half Day, and I've got one at Daniel Wright now. So, you know, we're in the thick of it with the involvement. We've had a wonderful experience with the district. And so the priority for me is getting to give back and to support the teachers and the administrative staff and everyone in continuing that. I have a special connection with special education. And so making sure, especially with some of the changes that had to be made due to COVID, but making sure that with that and with anything that comes down the line, making sure that those students' needs are met. I'm actually on the board for a camp down in Northfield that serves high-functioning autistic children and gives them a chance to learn about making friendships and things like that. So that's an area that's dear to my heart. I also feel that as someone with medical training, I could bring something to the table with further responses to developments with COVID. I am not saying that the current board did a bad job. I think they scrambled to deal with something where there was very little information initially. Lots of opinions, lots of deep feelings. And, you know, we're going to be getting more scientific information. So being able to interpret that and apply it to all the other issues that face the district, I think is going to be part of the ongoing. But it's not the, it's not the only or primary thing necessarily.
Okay, good, very good. Thank you. Maria?
Okay, um, but everybody has hit so many of the different points, right? Why I think we run, it's a wanting to serve, wanting to help our district, wanting to be there for our children. I have children that are in both Half Day and Daniel Wright. And I've only become more familiar about what the job of the school board is over the past couple of years, but especially this past year with everything that was going on with COVID-19 and the pandemic. And the school board really did such a great job dealing with making such tough decisions. And so I just, with four spots up, I really felt like it was time to try and give back to the community and be a part of the decisions that are made on the school board level because we need these servants to do this work. And we have, like, as a district, really benefited from the wisdom of a lot of the parents who have been through the school district. But at this time, there were only two parents that actually had kids still in the district. And so I thought it was great that we would maybe get some more input from parents who were in the trenches. So, and I am also very involved with PTO. I'm the current vice president this year and just wanted to expand my knowledge of what happens in District 103.
That's great. Thank you very much. Michael?
Thank you.
I get to go last here and...
I'll put you first next time, next question.
A lot of very similar things. For me, I think the biggest thing was just, as people have said, serving and giving back to the community a bit more. I do volunteer in several different organizations in the broader community, but I wanted to do something more local here in Lincolnshire. My wife is very, very engaged in the district and she's the president of the Music Boosters and has volunteered many times over the years within the district. And so she inspired me to look to see what else I could do to help as well. So I think that's kind of my driver is just really being able to help and give back. I think my background and area is really in project management, program management. So I think there's a lot of skills that would be complementary to some of the things that others had said here too. Catherine, I like the idea of the medical background and some of that and how that will help. I think in my area, just focused on planning, risk management, problem solving, collaboration and working with others. I, in my day-to-day job, I manage very large-scale projects and programs with hundreds of team members and getting them all to work effectively together. I think there's some, those are some of the transferable skills that I think I could bring to the table. I'm not looking to come in, you know, in coming in with just my particular idea, but I do definitely have thoughts on things that I can share. And I've shared with the board to date. I've been pretty active in the meetings lately, over the last year or so, and sharing ideas and thoughts there. Hopefully, the board found some of those beneficial. But yeah, overall, just want to be able to help the community and give back.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Very good, everybody. Okay, next question, Michael. We'll go from the bottom of the list back. So how do you think the current learning model is going? Any changes that you would offer up or?
I think where we're at right now is pretty good, actually. I'm very happy that we're back in person. I think we have a pretty good, robust remote model as well. So I think both models are pretty good. The, you know, obviously, as we look forward to the fall time, I think there, you know, it's a good time to take a step back and look at what improvements could be made. I know that remote will still be important in the fall. And so I think one area I'd like to look at with the remote area is some of the minutes in the remote learning model. I think there's, I think the explanation around the difference is really around how much time people are spending on screens and so forth. But I think there's some breaks in the remote model that aren't in alignment with the in-person ones. So I think, you know, that's something to look at. That could be very valid, but like to have broader discussion on that. The, you know, the in-person approach, I think, is working well. It seems very safe. So I think overall, the model, I'm pretty happy overall. It took us a while to get to some of these things. But I think, as I think Maria or someone else said, I think the board did an excellent job getting here. It was, I, you know, I have great thanks and gratitude to the board. They were thrown into a very difficult situation, very, you know, last minute to try to do this. And I think they did a very, very good job. If you do, as a project manager, we always do lesson learned activities when we close a project. I think if we looked back, there are things that could be done, could have been done differently. But we see that with all projects, but that, those are my thoughts.
Okay, thank you very much. Maria?
Um, could you repeat the question?
Yeah, just how do you think the current learning model is going and any changes or improvements?
I am, I think that the current model is going well. I think that there are a lot of challenges that will be facing us in the fall. For example, right now, it's, there's maybe about a 50/50 split. I'm not exact on the numbers of how many kids are in person and how many are remote. My children are remote and there are things that could be fixed about that model. But I think all of it is just a part of learning new technologies, finding ways to keep children engaged. It's been really a struggle for the teachers, for the school board, just to have effective learning for the children that are at home. I know that I am leaning towards trying to get my children back in school in person in the fall. And I imagine that there will be a lot of parents that are in the same boat. And so the challenge is really going to be how to keep those safety measures in place and with the extra children that are going to be in the schools and keep, you know, the teachers safe, keep everybody safe.
Sure. Okay, thank you. Catherine?
You know, again, it was a scramble at the beginning to come up with a program. And the teachers did a great job last spring. This fall, in terms of the remote, both my children were remote initially. They really upped their game. I mean, the whole, the whole thing was just incredible. A lot of work must have gone into that on everybody's part. I think I definitely agree with Maria's point that next year, I think more people are going to want to get their kids back in, if possible. And so, you know, looking at that, maybe not doing some kids full in-person and some full remote, but more of a hybrid like a lot of other districts are doing. I know we have a very unique way of doing it and it's worked really well for us. Maybe we have to look at changing that depending on what the community wants, where the community is with infection rates, you know. Can we do a three-foot distance rather than a six-foot difference? There's going to be more information coming out about that. We don't even know yet whether the vaccines decrease the spreading rate. There's some evidence that they do. So maybe the fact that we've got teachers vaccinated, which is amazing and wonderful that we got that for the, well, not we, because I didn't do anything, but that's been done for the teachers in our district. So there's a lot of that to look at and I think it will probably get tweaked. But overall, what they came up with for this year has been very good.
Okay. All right, Kate. First, I, before you answer, do you, can you tell us what the percentages that are in-person?
We're just, we're under 50% in-person.
So, okay, just under.
I mean, Anne, do, I forgot the numbers, but it's under 50, slightly under 50?
Yeah, we're about 50% at DW and Sprague, just under, and then Half Day is a little bit less than 50.
Okay, okay. All right, thanks. I think that definitely helps with, you know, knowing, you know, how many are in-person and... Okay, so how do you think it's going?
Um, so I, I mean, personally, I, I think it's went well. I mean, we definitely, the spring was tough. It was tough everywhere. The summer, we made adjustments as a board. I think we pushed back a little bit on the, on the administration. We have a wonderful director of curriculum instruction who went, worked really hard to find good programs for our kids, good teaching models, you know, good curriculum. We had some bumps in the road in the fall. And the one thing I wish we would have done differently is possibly have the kids in school a little bit sooner and maybe other schools that did that had success. And we were only in school for about three weeks rather before we, the county strongly recommended that schools shut down. So that's one regret I have, but I do think we've done a really great job. I think we've been really lucky with our teachers who are willing to come back. Not every district has that, has that going for them. And we are really lucky that that's the case. So I'm really happy, families I've talked to have been really happy who are in-person. I think we will be evolving for the fall. We have already sent out a survey that families, you know, that's really just saying, like, if things, you know, if we were, if things look today, like, if things are, look in the fall like they look today, what would you choose, right? That's our worst-case scenario. I frankly think we're going to get new guidance from the CDC and some other places that are going to indicate that the distancing will be shortened. And I think we will be able to bring more students back. However, I know as a board, most of us are committed to doing that at whatever cost. So if it requires getting additional space, because spacing hasn't been adjusted, you know, we'll look at the cost benefit of all that, but we really want to do what's best for kids. And as many people as want to be back in the classroom, if that's the best environment for that student, we want to make that happen. So I, for sure, missed steps along the way, but really happy with where we are now, especially when you look at districts in the area who are now just getting back or just going back half-time. I'm really happy for the way our district, where things played out in our district.
Okay, great. Thank you. Asha?
Yeah, for me personally, my kids were remote and continue to be remote. So things have worked out well for, for me personally and our family. But I know that that's not necessarily the case for all families. What worked well for us would likely not work well for everybody and vice versa. So I, and I also understand that each school has its own logistical challenges. And I, I think I would lean on the board to learn more about what they learned throughout the course of this, this whole thing. And then really follow the science and figure out how best to allow for in-person instruction for all the families who, who want it. Maybe we get more creative somehow and in the space. I know that every school has probably dissected every which way to figure out how to fit more bodies in a safe way. But as everyone else has already noted, more science, more information will likely come out between now and the fall. And we'll just have to lean on the facts and the science and hopefully find, continue to improve what's already been, what's been put forth by the board.
Okay, thank you. And then Anne?
I'll probably echo some things that...
Yeah, sorry, it's just a lot of, yeah.
Appreciate the comments from everybody else around, you know, the recognition of this year and what's happened so far. Definitely, it was not something any of us anticipated dealing with. But I would echo what Kate said. I feel like we did, I'm happy with the model that we're, that we have in place today. I feel like a lot of time was spent in the summer, both from the curriculum side and from our principals and our staff in looking, in the board, looking at, you know, what are our options? And then ultimately, we came down to what option works the best for kids in terms of maximizing their learning, whether they're remote or in-person. And that's how we ultimately, you know, picked the path of the five days, you know, five full days in person versus trying to do some hybrid. Of course, that meant parents had to choose and pick, pick a path for a semester at a time. But it allowed us to really work closely and collectively with the teachers and administration on putting students in pods or in groups under a model and then really have a focused education under that model. I know that, you know, it's a very collaborative effort. And as Kate mentioned, we were lucky and that our teachers were working with us and would come back. I think that's a testament to the relationships that exist and the trust that goes hand-in-hand with that. And that, you know, while we represent the community and are elected by the community, we can't do what we need to do if we can't work collectively with our teachers and our administration and so forth. So going forward, we've already started talking about what the fall will look like. We have and we continue to look at other schools' models to see if there's something we're missing there. What we have been hearing is that our other local elementary districts are actually looking at how to get to our model. They're looking at, you know, waving the six-foot distancing to try to get kids in school five days a week. In terms of the remote model, we recognize that we have to continue to evolve that model as well. It's not going away. And so while we've made leaps from last spring to now, we need to continue that process. I think there's a survey that'll be going out next week and we've been doing those, you know, every several months to kind of get feedback and understand what's working, what's not working, what do we need to adjust. To Michael's points about minutes, that's an ongoing discussion we have in terms of how many minutes can we have synchronously versus asynchronously? You know, what's too much? What can different age groups handle? And weighing the pros and cons of that. And it sometimes comes down to curriculum as well. Do I need to tweak my curriculum? Discussions we've started to have too is what regression have we had this last year? Or where has our growth fallen behind what our expectations are? We did assessments in the fall and looked at data to try to understand where those pockets are that we need to address. We'll have to continue to do that. And that's actually been a discussion we're already having in terms of budgeting and planning for next year in terms of what do we need to do? Our second graders didn't get through all the material, right? And now going into third grade, I can't jump into division. Didn't even do multiplication and so forth. So I don't know if that's true, but for example, so, but we need to be cognizant of that and have that as part of the planning as well as we move forward. So I think the model's good. Now it's just how do we continue this into the fall with recognizing more people might be comfortable coming back to school full-time?
Okay, I just had a quick question. So if things don't get worse, it's going, this model's going to stay the same until the end of the school year, this, to the spring, right? So this is the spring model, 50% roughly?
The whole semester.
So you won't, you won't add any more in-person people? This is, this is pretty set then?
That's, that's the plan. It's, it's that the kids have been grouped and potted. So any change would require them to shift teachers and be more disruptive sometimes than would be games. So, but what we are looking at is opportunities for our remote kids to maybe come into the school if they're comfortable to do some activities possibly. You know, especially our eighth graders that are graduating. Some of them have never been in DW since March of last year and they're going to graduate having never seen renovated school and things like that. What can we do to give them those opportunities?
Okay. And then real, real quick, Kate. So by the time this new board is elected and in place, the fall might be pretty well set, you think? Or don't know yet? I just wonder how much input the new, you know, members of the board would have?
Yeah, well, the new board will be seated in early May, so there'll still be plenty of time.
I didn't know how far advanced you guys, I know you're talking about the fall, but, you know, it's all fluid, I'm sure, you know? Yeah, okay, just curious. So, thank you very much. Okay, next question. So this is a post-COVID question. So how do you see the future of the district after COVID-19 subsides? And I'm gonna start with Catherine, kind of in the middle of the list here. I mean, what do you see? I know, just real quick, on some of the questionnaire, some of you mentioned that, you know, some projects have been put aside or some future planning and stuff like that is on hold. And then let's just say COVID, you know, is under control and things are somewhat going back to normal. What do you see the future of the district?
I am, I am not familiar in detail with the projects that have had to be put on hold. So I can't speak to those as, I'm sure the current board members can most excellently. I would like to see the district continue with an emphasis on diversity. I would like to see those, we have a lot of very smart kids in this district. And we do very well by them. Sometimes the kids who are not the top of the heap do get a little lost in the shuffle. And I'd like to see bringing them up without denying anything or taking anything away from our more gifted students, but especially those with either learning disabilities or social-emotional challenges. You know, how can we have everybody coming to some degree of success? And that requires, you know, looking at, I'm sure, every part of the educational process.
Okay, thank you. Anne, how about you?
I would say, and I put this in my questionnaire, but we, every five years, we do a strategic planning process and produce a five-year vision. So last year, we were working on that. We work with about 50, 60-person community or committee, which includes staff, administration, board members and parents and as well as community members or representatives from even the Stevenson High School. And we work to provide that, to build that vision. And then that becomes kind of the template for our five-year goals. And we break that down into individual goals. We were slated to, last year, in connection with our strategic planning process, we were creating a portrait of a graduate to kind of give us that picture of what do we want a student coming out of Daniel Wright or Half Day or Sprague to look like as they go on to the next step in their education? In March, we were supposed to be getting to a point of finalizing that and building the goals. And we put, you know, it was literally the week that the school shut down that was going to be one of our final meetings and we said, let's just hold off on this. And, um, and since then, the focus has been all hands on deck to get through the pandemic. So that's been on hold. So one of the things that came out of that, though, that we heard is really a concern, not so much academically, but really socially emotionally for the kids. A number one, I think, across all of the people that met was empathy and, you know, instilling empathy in our, in our children and making them good citizens moving forward and just concerns that we're seeing in general across the country and probably the world in terms of children's development in that area. So, um, so I, you know, I'm looking forward to getting back to that piece of looking at what is our plan. And I think it'll be interesting as we look at it now with this new lens coming out of the pandemic. Because I think the pandemic has also shown us a number of... Because I think the pandemic has also shown us a number of things we were not aware of before, you know, the power of remote learning. How some kids really flourished under a remote model. What can we take away from some of those things that we've learned now and incorporate that into a five-year plan? Where we can really enhance the learning for all of our students using the different information we have now and the different tools and so forth, so. It'll be interesting to get back to that piece as we get post-pandemic.
Okay.
We can start to lay that foundation.
Okay, thank you. Michael?
Yep, I think looking forward, a couple of things stand out to me. Just, I think in the recent, one of the recent board meetings, there was the analysis done on the future enrollment, and I think, you know, to date. We've always been in this path where the enrollment's been growing and we're expanding and expanding and expanding, and I was kind of surprised by the recent analysis. It looks like we're. Our enrollment over the next five years, if we believe the different models is actually gonna go down, which is a change. And so I think the the district needs to look at that and consider what that means. So I think that's one piece that we can focus on. I know that I believe that we have a teacher contract renewal coming up in the next year or two, and so I think there's thought and planning that needs to go into that around. The criticality of really retaining the excellent staff. We've got such a wonderful staff and we want to retain and help grow and engage that staff and then. Make sure that we're being fiscally responsible with the community, so I think that's a very important part. I know the community has always been concerned about class size, and so I think that's something that needs. I think we've done a pretty good job overall. I think some areas are, you know, goes up and down, and so I think that's an area to focus on as well. And then. I liked what Anne was saying too around the social emotional learning piece, and I think. It kind of falls into, you mentioned, okay, COVID is kind of done. I think there's the after effects of COVID and what's that done to the social emotional learning of the children and how do we address that? How do we pick up not only from the the gaps in the academics that have happened to some degree? What about the social emotional learning? And I've seen that specifically with my children, there's been, you know, definitely icy differences there, and I know that's. Something that we'll have to address coming out of COVID, so those are a few of my thoughts.
Yeah, okay, very good. Asha, how about you?
So post-COVID. I anticipate, I have a lot of learning to do. The learning curve, no doubt, will be steep. I had the opportunity to serve. On the Superintendent's Advisory Council for Equitable Education for a short stint and. There are a lot of topics that the school and the board. Deal with that would never come to mind unless you're personally impacted by by some of these situations, and so there is. There is a lot to learn. I think that, you know, bringing sixty people in at least to. To create that five-year plan, I I like hearing that there's a broad range of people involved in that process to ensure that we are bringing. All light to voices in the community. I think, you know, just given my my background again in finance and my professional experience is a lot in. Exploring all options that are available to to us as. You know, potentially as a board or as the school, maximizing resources, I think, is really important. Making sure we're we're aware of all the resources that are available to us. And, yeah. Focusing on the the. Topics or or the agendas of of the district to ensure, you know, a strong education, that the social emotional piece for students and families. Are supported. As someone mentioned, diversity, you know, that too. And then fiscal spending is really important also in making sure that we're spending appropriately.
Okay. Thank you. Maria?
So I feel like it's, it's gonna be so hard to really. See when we are actually going to be post-pandemic, because when will that be? It's it's. You know, is that a year from now? Is that two years from now? How do we ease into that? The social emotional learning piece that Anne mentioned is just. It's gonna be so interesting because there are kids who have missed so much and it'll be. Some of that there, there's no getting it back, the things that they've missed, whether it's an eighth grader who missed graduation or. This year, the kids who were missing all of the wonderful programs that we have that enrich our children. And everything that we do is is on such a tight schedule in the school because we do offer so many things. For the kids, so I I just see the future being. The same wonderful district that we've always been, but we've got a, but having to figure out how to. Ease our kids back into this place where. They've missed so much and they don't know, both of my kids went to a new to a new school this year that they haven't gotten to go to a single class in. So as going into third grade and going into sixth grade, so. But there's just gonna be a lot, and I think the learning curve, as Asha said, is gonna be really, really high for those. Whoever ends up being the new members of the board. It's gonna be interesting to see how we figure all those pieces out.
Okay, thank you. And then Kate?
And going last is tough.
Michael knows, right?
Right, so I'd already written down some things that have, and so I won't, I won't dwell on them, but I, you know, obviously with like Anne, I was looking forward to the portrait of a graduate, which was emphasizing. The main message we got was, yeah, raising empathetic global citizens, right? What do we do to bring those kinds of people into the world? They're often more times, more often successful than just the really academic kids, so talking about meeting those needs, so that was one thing. I think post-COVID remote learning will be some. Will be part of our future and how does that look and how do we make sure that's effective? And while we touch on social emotional learning, what I've also learned from people in the district is that. Kids at this age in K to eight can actually have mental health issues as a result of this, right? I mean. Greater than just social emotional, and I think that's gonna be something we really need to look at. And how we might need to beef up some of our services in that area, so I'm talking about that. Obviously, I want to stay financially sound. We have done so many additions to our buildings due to increase. Increase enrollment and as Michael said, it was surprising and I'm. I'm somewhat skeptical of the numbers that were presented to us. I just don't see the decline the way they predicted, but that's just my gut. So I won't comment, but if we didn't grow exponentially for the next few years, I'd be okay with that because we've spent a lot of money and we need to. Make sure we're staying fiscally responsible and just. If we had the chance to use some money to maybe update some of our spaces, some in some of our buildings, we've done some of that, but we could standard a little more. And lastly, the thing I was gonna mention, which was touched on, is we did, our teacher's contract was up this year. We decided that it wasn't really a great time to bargain a a new contract. We've asked a lot of our teachers. And it just didn't feel, the timing wasn't right to go through that process, so we rolled over our contract and extended it a year. And they all just get their same raise and such same benefits that would have benefited in a four-year contract. And we will revisit that next year, and so that'll be a, that'll be a tough one too. But the last couple of year contracts have actually gone quite well, so great, again, another great teachers' union has made that. An easier process. Not to say they've always been easy, but anyway, so there's lots of things to look forward to, and I think we don't even know some of what are. What we, we're gonna need to face, you know, post-pandemic. I don't even know if we know everything yet, so.
Okay.
I think time will tell.
Right. Okay, very good, thank you. And then I just have one more question. And then this is just kind of like some, just give us some highlights of yourself as to. Well, you know, what qualifies you for the job and just kind of. Take a couple of minutes, just, you know, talk to our readers about, you know, why you're the best person to be on the board. And I'm just gonna go down my list here, so like we did at the start, so we'll start with Anne.
Okay, I've, I have been in District 103 for almost eighteen years since. And I remember it because my youngest just turned eighteen, so my three kids have all gone through District 103 schools. Prior to that, I was a project manager at Accenture focusing on process reengineering and computer systems implementation, so. From my perspective, you know, what I've brought to the board the last few years is some of that process reengineering perspective. As we approach different problems, I'm the project manager management approach. I know. Dr. Warren, many times I was like, I have a spreadsheet that can organize this all together and. And we can, we can kind of, you know, look at this a different way. And so, you know, while it's important to bring those different perspectives, it helps, you know, every board member has those. Their different background that they bring, and when we all come together and share those, it really. Helps the collectiveness to produce, you know, some wonderful insights. I know this year, you know, we've really benefited from having a very diverse perspective on the board. From, you know, people that were more comfortable being out and about, you know, socially distanced and masked, and then others that were more comfortable at home. And it was important to provide that in terms of representing the community. I feel like moving forward, even though my children are no longer at Sprague, Half Day or Daniel Wright. I'm still very involved there. I am, you know, Kate will attest, I sat with Michelle Blackley and helped, you know, schedule out. Pods in the fall as we tried to build our five-day section, five-day full sections. And I think some of that is the background of being so engrossed in the schools when my kids were younger that I know how those schools work. I know a lot of the teachers in the schools and I can provide. That insight there, but also at this point, having had my kids go through, it gives you a little bit of a different perspective looking back on things. It's good to have board members that have children in the school and very engaged in the school. And it's also to have some work, good to have some board members whose kids have kind of been there, been through it, done that, you can look back on it and have a different lens. And also realizing that we're representing a community of users and non-users. The majority of our community actually are non-users of the schools. They, their kids have gone through the school and they want us to keep the school strong. They want us to make sure we're delivering quality education to the kids in a, you know, fiscally responsible way, and so I feel like that's the perspective that I can. Bring to the board or continue to bring to the board in another term.
Okay, very good, thank you. Asha?
So just to. Talk a little bit about my personal experience, I've served on various charitable boards over a number of years. I've been on the finance committees. I was actually the education chair of of my synagogue board. For a couple of years, so I do have a little bit, but of experience serving on a board. My, I am a fiduciary, meaning I always put my clients' interests before mine, so I I automatically operate under that mindset. Of, you know, I'm not doing this to be self-serving, I'm doing this to serve the community. And really, I just view my my role as trying to help solve problems if there, if any arise. Trying to think through processes and ways that we can maximize resources. Helping communicate. Communication is an issue in all organizations and all institutions. If there's a, if there's a way to help better communicate how decisions are made amongst the board. And then, you know, out to the community, I think that's an area that I would like to focus on. I think just transparency, honesty and being a resource in any way that I can be is. The reason that I'm running and why I think I'd be a good board member.
Okay, thank you very much. Kate?
Remember my order. So I, I've, I've been in Lincolnshire for eleven years. I, I spent, like I said, eight years on the board. I've spent the last. Was it four, Anne? How long have I been? The two, four, how long have I been vice president, two? I've been vice president for two, four?
Three.
Three?
All right. What's the difference? Exactly.
I've been vice president before that, before that, before I, you know, did run for the board, I spent time on the Learning Fund Foundation Board and the PTO Board. As a 103 board member, I also sit on the ELC, which is our Exceptional Learners Collaborative, which is the Consortium District's Special Ed Program. And so I I am passionate about that. I love that board. I love. What? What I learn and what I can bring to that board. I, in my professional life, which I am no longer working outside the home, I was a partner at KPMG, which is a finance and. Consult, accounting consulting firm, so I have some project management skills and financial background from that. But I, I, you know, I hope that my record for the last eight years speaks to itself. I feel like I've been available, approachable to. Parents and community members. I'm always available to take a call. I reply to every email that I receive. And I'd like to think I take a balanced approach. In my views and, you know, look at all sides before making a decision, so. I, like I said, I hope that my record speaks for itself and that if people like what they saw, then they'll continue to vote for me, and if. They didn't, then it's time for a change.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Catherine?
Well, part of your phrasing for the question, Paul, was to say why we're, you know, why I'm the best. Choice for the board, and I don't think I am. I don't think there is a best. I think the board is a team. And so you need people with different skills, different perspectives, but all, you know, of course, all with the ability to listen. And to remain open-minded and willing to change their minds, because there's gonna be stuff that. That you learn, that you find out you were wrong about, and that's okay, as long as you're open-minded about it. That said, I think what I particularly bring again is the scientific background, which not only applies to COVID. But the ability to look at data, to assess studies, to find flaws in them. And say, is this something we can trust? It also means that I am familiar with, very used to having to make decisions when there is not complete information. And, you know, the board had to do that a lot this year.
Sure.
They didn't have complete information and they had to make a best choice. And that is, you know, that is strength right there.
Okay, very good, thank you. Maria?
I would, I have to agree with Kat that for me, it's not about. Why I'm the best candidate. For me, this isn't about winning, it's about serving my school district. For my kids, for the fellow parents to be, to help be a voice and. I come from a situation with my children where they are very. Sort of middle of the road, so I don't have, let's say, the passion that a child who has learning issues or special needs. So from that perspective, I'm kind of able to pull back and just listen to everybody because I I've had and. A really great time with my kids in this school district, but I do hear different things from different parents and I always want to. Be able to help them find a solution. As a member of, I was on the board of Lincolnshire Community Nursery School before, I'm on the, like I said, the PTO board now. It really is for me just about filling the shoes for the job that needs to be done. In my life before children, I, I am a stay-at-home mom. I'm an attorney, I was an attorney by trade and there's really that critical thinking piece, like getting together as much information as you can and just trying to. Follow rules, but and then, and then finding out. Why things are the way they are, and if it's not working the way it is, what can we do to change it? What can we do to make it better? And that's what I'm hoping to bring. To the school board.
All right, very good, thank you. And then Michael?
I think first, just background on me a little bit, I've been living in Lincolnshire for fifteen years. And I've worked for a Lincolnshire-based company for over thirty or almost thirty years now. So I feel like I have a tight connection to the community. Can really understand, as we were talking about, both the the student and then children aspect of it, because I have two kids now who are. Cause I have two kids now who have gone through, or they're both in Daniel Wright in the middle school now. So I've seen the, from the beginning, all the way up through Daniel Wright, I have that experience. But I also see what's going on in the rest of the community and the input from people who are not users of the school. So I think I bring that experience here as well. I think, you know, I mentioned earlier, some of my project management and program management skills around planning and problem solving and risk management. I think those will all, could be beneficial. I think others have some similar skills too. But I think, you know, one of the things that I've seen, you know, comes, come to life in the last year or so is that the board is getting tons of information, all these metrics and statistics and, and science. And there's a new, a new one every day. And what do you trust? What do you believe? And which one do you focus on? And I think we need to, I'm good at getting all this information in my, in, you know, in my role, very analytical, really trying to plow through it and make sense of it. And so I think I can help in that area. And so, you know, I, I think we're still seeing that. We get, seems like the governor and, and the Illinois Department of Health have new metrics and the county have metrics that, that seem to change in guidelines. And I think we need to take a step back and really look at what does that mean locally for our community? And which of those are most important to us? So I can help with that. The other thing I mentioned, I, I think earlier too, is in my role and my experience, I've had a lot of opportunity to work with large teams, small teams to help with collaboration. And, you know, I see the board as a seven-member team, you know, and this team needs to work together, all seven members, along with the superintendent and then the community. And I, I, I have a good skill in meetings and teamwork to help pull all the team in. And I think I can do a bit more of that. I, I see some board members contributing more than others. And I think just helping to promote the dialogue so that all seven members have dialogue and input and make sure that we're hearing from all of those diverse, it is a diverse group, hearing from all of those diverse members of the board. So I think those are just a few of the things. And again, I'm super proud of our district. It, it is a wonderful district, one of the best in the state, I would say. And so I'd love to have the opportunity to serve on the board.
All right, thank you. All right, very good. We're under an hour, so that's excellent. So I appreciate everybody's time and I think the voters have their tough choices ahead. Cause I think there's some really good candidates here that are gonna, you know, definitely have an impact on, on the school district and the kids. So, but I appreciate everybody attending and great answers. And that's about it. So if you have any questions, just go and send me an email. And then, like I said, this will be posted sometime this week. And then hopefully Russell will be in touch with you. And if you want to send him an email, go ahead and do that. And that's about it. So I thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you. Have a great day, everyone.
Take care, bye-bye.